Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Cool. Wow. Yes, there you go. That's great, I didn't recognize. Is this? Yeah. You said skies. So does he still swim? Does he have a team at school or? Is he on the team at school?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Well, I present.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yes, big event. We're looking forward to it. Progress never. No, they don't test the food chart gonna make it up. You want me to ask? Oh, yeah. What? Yeah, that's tough to see. Oh, yeah. Yeah, the life of the party. Funny, I was telling you. Yeah, so it'll be fun. It'll be fun. You're going to stay, right?
No. I think Doug started his day at Target. Really well.
Okay, there you go. All right. Yep, fair enough. Doug was taken, yes. Actually, she was gonna, she was supposed to spam. Then it fell right, she was a little bit, it fell through. Came up like.
We just let it hang in there.
Yeah. There's a real. Airfare, accommodations, all travel, everything, all included. Sweet, sweet. No, she, she, just her. Some of the fans. All of her senses are just for the dress. A fan as well. There are trips that I can go on, but usually they're off-season. We have to pay our fare. And then it's usually something far away for a week. We're gonna go that far for a week. Might as well add a little. And now all of a sudden, oh, I'm spending. No. Well, you are saving a lot of money. It's not the season. You spend an eight, 10 grand.
Matt is there?
Ah, no, he's not. He's at trainings.
Okay.
All right, up all the village board meeting for Monday, December 3rd, 2018 to order. We have a forum and the agenda was properly posted.
Yes.
Let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, item four is public appearances. Public opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. Okay. Item number five is discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of November 19th, 2018. Any additions, corrections?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Good call. Motion and a second to approve as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. Item six, we have presentations to the board and we have Briar Patch Youth Services. Jay, if you wanna come on up here and if you have anything you want on those television, that white thing is a camera.
Lisa told me that, that scares me.
Yeah, it is kinda, it's Big Brother.
It's way too much technology for me. Well, thanks for the opportunity to come. I apologize, I had meant to be here two weeks ago, but the state of Wisconsin decided to do a surprise audit on our youth shelter, which required me to be there because our executive director was kindly off work that week. So, they needed access to all of our files and things like that. So, I don't know how long your meeting was, but I was there until about 10:30 at night, having them finish up, so.
You'd have rather been here.
I would have much rather been here, trust me. So, I do appreciate the opportunity to come back this year. It's been since 2005, believe it or not, that we've had a contract with the village of Cottage Grove to do peer court, so 13 years. Just signed the new agreement, I think, for following upcoming year with Lee. So, we have that moving forward for 2019. But maybe just a little bit of background for some of you who are newer to the board. And I have all notes here because otherwise I'll be here all night talking to you about all of the wonderful things that we do at Briar Patch, but this is specific to youth peer court. And this is a voluntary opportunity which serves as an alternative to the traditional juvenile municipal court system here in Cottage Grove. Youth Peer Court offers the opportunity to receive a meaningful restorative sanction designed to restore harm, damage from a jury of peers. Youth Peer Court is for first-time offenders who come before Judge Hepfinger. Usually the second Thursday of every month, we operate peer court right in here. If you come between the hours of four and six, you'll see a really energetic group of young people who sit as jurors. They are usually hearing between four to six cases every Thursday or every second Thursday of every month. Most of them are age eighth grade up through high school. The cool thing about most of our volunteer jurors are that they are former youth who received a municipal court citation. They have chosen to stay on as volunteers with us, so that's one of the other benefits. From a person like myself who sees kids not as engaged in their local community as they should. Being a Cottage Grove resident at school, to see the numbers of kids that we do see stay on as volunteers after their sentence, which is usually a three-month window that we have to have them complete whatever the obligation is that the jury came up with, so. Certainly, the offenders benefit by taking responsibility for their actions. They have the opportunity to sit before a jury of their peers, they're asked questions. They're asked questions about what happened, they're asked questions about what could have been an alternative that they were doing. I can tell you from sitting in on numerous experiences with that, that the youth are way harder on them than I would be. They're really good at finding creative solutions to some of the dispositions that they come up with. Some examples that I can give you off the top of my head that were shared with me by our staff. For instance, a young person who was picked up for a retail theft charge was also interested in doing something in her community here. And so, the jury came up with the solution that she was going to collect blue jeans, gently use blue jeans, and take all those collected blue jeans and take them to the CAC, Community Action Coalition, where they'd be redistributed out to the community at no charge. And so, she got together actually with a group of her friends and they collected over 150 pairs of blue jeans from the community to do that. So, that was kind of a cool way to address a retail theft issue. One of the benefits of young people who come before peer court here is they also have, will receive a lot of access to the services that we provide. I threw out a handout to all of you that goes over a lot of our services. You can see that we have a wide variety of things. When youth come in here, the parents are also part of the process. The parents are asked what's going on at home. It's not uncommon for their, you know, the issue that brought them to court may not be the presenting issue of what's really going on at home. And so, we've received a lot of referrals through our peer court process that have led to families having counseling opportunities through our agency. We have a parent support group. We have parents that say, you know what, I don't know what to do. I'm kind of at wits' end, this young person isn't coming home at night, they're not following their curfews, they're not going to school as they should. Chief is picking up all kinds, no, he's not. But we have a lot of opportunity for them to connect with other parents who are experiencing similar things. So, we have twice monthly parent support meetings at Briar Patch. Youth who may present with a drug and alcohol issue, and we've had probably, I think, 10 offenses this year that are related to possession charges. All of those youth, I look back on the dispositions that the kids came up with, came with a disposition that asked the young person to go through UWADEP, which is a non-cost to do what's called a posit screening. So, any young person that presents with drug and alcohol concerns, the jury is pretty good about making sure they get connected with drug and alcohol support. So, it's voluntary on the young person's part, but they fill out, like I said, what's called a posit screening, which kind of identifies if they are having an issue with usage. And if they are, there's services that are available through UWADEP at no cost for them to be able to connect with them. So, again, it's a way for young people that might be experiencing things in their local community that can lead to more involved drug and alcohol use later on, that we're getting them connected right off the jump when they're first experiencing a charge with a possession charge or something that the police gets them. So, other things, you know, for me, that I like to see is certainly it's a positive way, as I mentioned, for youth to become connected to their community here. That I said, we've had a lot of volunteers that have stayed on as volunteers after they are finished up. A lot of kids use this as a reference, obviously, for college application processes. Looks good on a college resume. They're also learning leadership skills. They're asked by our facilitator, we have an adult facilitator from our agency, that is part of the process. That person will screen what the offense is to the young persons. We didact any sort of other names of persons who are involved that aren't the young person that is here. All the youth have a sworn oath of confidentiality, so that information isn't shared at school the next day or things like that. And then they present what the issue is, and then they start to ask the questions. Process usually takes anywhere from 15 minutes to a half hour. The person who's received the citation is asked to sit outside. The jury decides, deliberates on what a good outcome is. And in 2018, I can tell you that through November, we had 58, 59 youth, 59 cases that were referred to us. We've seen 55 of them, we still have the month of December to see the final four. And then I think we have, according to Judge Hepfinger, a couple more cases that are gonna be coming our way. 37 males, 18 females thus far, the average age is 16. We meet every other month, we have a steering committee. Jeff is the representative from your board that comes to our every other week. Representative, not the chief, another person from the police department comes to that meeting, Judge Hepfinger. And then Katie Geezy, former board member, is one of the community volunteers that sits on our panel. And so, they get a regular update, which Jeff, I think, has copies of somewhere.
It was in the packet, too.
That we hand out for every other month that we meet. So, you have an updated amount of the data. One of the things that I spoke to the committee about at our last meeting a couple weeks ago was the fact that restorative justice in peer court is becoming a really popular way for communities to be able to address issues related to the disproportionate number of minority youth that are coming into our system. It's also being used as a way to address kind of the early intervention stuff. And so, there are quite a few grants out there. Dane County and their 2019 budget, Joe Parisi put in extra dollars to support our restorative justice contract that we have with the YWCA and with the Time Bank of Dane County. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because we are very grateful for the funding that we receive from the village as an agency. And as I told Jeff, there's a chance that if we get additional funding from the county to support other communities, that I would want to be able to give some of that money back because that's not money we're counting on for our 2019 budget. So, any new dollars that we receive to serve other communities in Dane County, we would kind of subtract that out because it's all prorated. Each community gives the same amount of money, and so, we would kind of prorate that back. So, there would be a chance that Matt would have an extra couple thousand dollars to play with somewhere else in the budget. But I don't know that for sure yet, what the amount is gonna be. I just know it's gonna happen at some time during 2019, so. I'll stop there so I don't keep you all night, and if there's, you know, specific questions that you want me to be able to answer. One thing that was in Madison 365 on the third was that Milwaukee County is now moving down the road of putting peer courts into all of their services within the Dane, or within Milwaukee County. Some of the things that they've researched, which is data that we've certainly received from our times doing this as well, is, you know, just kind of the data supports that restorative justice practices reduce recidivism, increases safety costs, less than traditional justice processes, create stronger communities, victims are providing voice. Offenders has, have a chance to make things right, pay things back to their community, in some cases, put the situation behind them. I bring that up because it's cool to see a large county like Milwaukee County doing that. But again, looking back through the data over the last five years, I can tell you that the data that we have indicates that communities with peer court programs, the recidivism rate is only about 15% for first-time offenders. That they'll reoffend in municipal court without peer court, that recidivism rate is closer to 40%. So, that's kind of a cool statistic. And the bigger one for me because of the cost that's affiliated with young people going to our, through our formal youth justice system. And this is data that I get from our Juvenile Court Administrator, John Baumann, at the end of every year. And over the last, again, five years, we can see that only about 6% of all youth, not just in Cottage Grove, but all youth throughout Dane County that have participated in peer court, only 6% of them will find their way to our formal youth justice system compared to about 25% of youth that received the citation, pay it, and don't go through a peer court process. So, I think it's a good investment in our community. As a taxpayer in Cottage Grove, I support it, but I'm not here tonight as that person. I'm here as the program director at Briar Patch. And so, again, thanks for your support for peer court for 13 years.
Any questions for Jay?
Yeah, I have a question. How many other communities in Dane County do the peer court?
So, we serve Sun Prairie, Oregon, and the YWCA is serving Verona. And then we serve all of the city of Madison. The city of Madison, Chief Koval decided three years ago, 2015, four years ago, that they were no longer gonna issue municipal court citations. So, they do what's called a restorative justice ticket. So, all Madison police officers, all 462 of them, have a restorative justice ticket book. And so, when a young person gets a municipal court citation, so underage drinking, possession of, you know, drugs, drugs paraphernalia, trespassing, things like that, they have the option, or not the option, they do give them a restorative justice ticket. All of those young people then will be referred to our program, Time Bank or Dane County, YWCA. We separate out all those referrals, and then we have the peer court experience happen within the city of Madison. So, last year, 2017, we had 892 youth who came through that process. Judge Koval, who is Chief Koval's brother, is the municipal court judge in Madison. So, he's now started to move a lot of his municipal court kids through that process as well. So, we'll see in 2018, because this is the first year that we've done it with the municipal court tickets, what happens with that, so.
Well, since there aren't, like, all the communities in Dane County aren't doing it, I'm glad that the village of Cottage Grove was part of it to begin with, so.
Yeah, I mean, you were on the cutting edge. I mean, that's something, like I said, that's, you know, we're really, you know, pleased with the results that we have. I can tell you again, in our more formal programs, which I provided you with a handout intense of supervision programs like that, we don't have a lot of Cottage Grove kids that come through, or, you know, Minona Grove kids that come through. I'd like to think that it's here, it's also because of our great police work that goes on. It's all kind of tied together, but thanks for all that you guys do. Thanks.
Thank you. As long as this was on peer court, Jeff, anything else to add for peer court?
Not, well, he had touched on the fact that they're looking to get, make it Dane County-wide, which I wanted to point out in my notes tonight to you guys, because that's a big step. And, you know, as a father, Jay, who had children that went through the peer court here in Cottage Grove, it was, it was a great experience, and they definitely, definitely learned from what happened. Let's see here. Oh, so the one thing that Jay did not touch upon is they did hire a new program coordinator, Ciara Grove. Am I saying that right? And she will be coming to visit us here, right? To introduce herself to the.
She's way nicer than me.
But that's the only other thing I wanted to add.
Jay, is she gonna take over your?
Yeah, she's, she's one of our program coordinators, so I have nine direct reports.
So, once she does, can you just send Lisa or Deb a letter and then they'll just make that change?
You bet.
All right, thank you. We have a presentation.
We have a contract, too.
Oh.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2019 Briar Patch Youth Services.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agreement for services for 2019 with Briar Patch. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? There you go, thank you. All right, now we're on to six B, presentation and discussing on Polco. If you wanna come up here, sir, and introduce yourself.
This is Pat Tannen from Polco, a former administrator at Sun Prairie. And Pat also does some work in, for the city of Veribu, I believe. And Pat's here to answer your questions, but I can give a quick overview.
Yeah.
Aaron provided memo.
Can I stop for just a second?
Yeah.
I wanna give you a plug for peer court.
I didn't, I didn't plan this.
It does me great to hear this because Sun Prairie was the first one who started the peer court. We turned a $5,000 CDBG money into $30,000, and we created the first peer court, which is, we worked with CAP at the time, and it's nice to see. And everything he quoted you, as far as statistics, as far as reciditive, is correct. It's been that way forever. It's a great program, and it really made me feel good to hear that it's really going well. So, that was my plug for tonight.
When did you start it in Sun Prairie?
I was afraid you were gonna ask me that. What? 2000? It's a long time ago. I had hair back then, it was a long time ago.
No, no, I remember all the area administrators.
Did you have hair then, Lee?
No. So, yeah, Aaron had a memo in the packet, he's away at some training, I can summarize that. So, last year around this time, started the Polco service. It was, as far as the cost, it's $250 per month, or $1,000, but $3,000 per year. Could be discontinued at any 30-day notice. It took about two months to get to 100 users, and now we're at about 240 users currently. We've asked questions that range from, at least the departments that have utilized it, Public Works, Parks and Rec, Planning Department, the Police Department. And then there's, Polco has some automated-generated baseline-type questions that Pat can talk about in a little bit. Couple of things that the departments have utilized it for specifically, the Parks and Rec Department looked at the municipal services building space and asked questions on how best to utilize that, the recreational space that's there now. And then also, the public helped select the playground for, the new playground at Fireman's Park. The Planning Department utilized it for the comp plan update, and the PD asked the fireworks question. Essentially, the departments, how these are generated, individual departments submit a question to myself, Aaron, and Lisa, and we kind, a combination of us kind of review that, proofread it, help them decide how best to answer the question, determine if any background is necessary. And that's how we've been utilizing it so far. And in going through this, I realize it'd probably be a good idea, perhaps monthly, to do a report on results and questions to the board on a monthly basis. And, you know, seeing the user ship increase, and Pat can maybe touch on this a little bit more, but I, you know, I think we're seeing that increase, where we are, you know, doing some citizen engagement, and we're getting them involved with these questions. And I think, over time, residents can see that questions are being utilized and they're, you know, they're being heard and things like that. Should be helpful. And then certainly, if an individual board member has a question that you guys would like to ask, feel free to submit it or discuss it at a board meeting and, you know, work on getting that question out there, so. Anything, any questions before Pat has anything to say?
Do you, do you know how Polco works? Are you pretty familiar with it?
It's linked on my website. Well, in Eric's case, it's linked on my website.
Right, but the whole process behind it is, we require that each person register with us by giving us their name and their zip code and their email address. That way, we can verify them as a resident of your community. And then we can break down the data on the results by age and gender and location. And it also eliminates me from living in Sun Prairie to responding to your questions and really starting to skew your data. It really, and then you can break it down by your voting districts. Because we use the registration process, you can only register once, and so, you know that there's some, some good quality data as opposed to Survey Monkey, you have no idea where they're coming from or who's doing it. And then by having the, the registration process, you actually have what's called a followership. And as our CEO explains it, it's kind of like Twitter met Survey Monkey. And the fact that you have that followership, you can ask, can you ask more questions and can get more continual responses that way.
And I'll add that, all the additional information that we can get from these questions is available at Village Hall. It's, we didn't include it in the packet because it's 250 pages, and it'll just keep, keep drawing. But Lisa's gonna keep a binder at Village Hall, binders eventually.
Any other questions for Pat?
Because my question is, how would you, we spoke briefly before the meeting. How would you recommend the goal of increasing usership? If we're only at, you know, 200 registered and looking at the last couple of questions, I see that 25, 32, 38, we're only touching a small surface of our population here. There's probably over 4,000 registered voters, so.
And we, you can also have people who are under 18 or not registered voters who can also respond, too. We actually have a program, and I'll be happy to work with Matt, and getting those of different ways we call reaching out. You can do it through school groups, church groups. Oshkosh did a really nice job with their park and rec, because really, their first question really dealt with a park and rec-related issue. Another town or community in Ohio, they pushed it out through their Facebook, because it's my hometown, and all of a sudden, I see this coming up through their police department, through their followership through that way about registering. And they were able to generate some really good registrations real quick to be able to do that. And so, there is a lot of different ways, and I always say, it's not like the Field of Dreams. If you build it, they won't necessarily come. You really have to go out and really take some effort. You can embed it in your, on your Facebook, you can embed it in all different ways. We also have a mobile app, so people can actually do it through their mobile app, too.
How many total municipalities are using the service now?
We have over 60, and we're in 20 states. And then we were just named as a enterprise partner with the National League of Cities, which will, we're now the, their endorsed community outreach software program.
And 240 users, you know, it doesn't seem like much right now, but it did overdouble in, you know, the last year or so. You know, next year at this time, if we'd be at, you know, 480, that'd be a nice improvement.
It could take a while to get the word around that they can do this and help therefore.
My concern is, was the usership or, you know, registered respondents increases. I'm looking at the first set of questions, and we have 94, we have 92, 83. So, as we get more registered individuals to respond, the actual response rates going down. So, all my concern is, we're increasing here, but the response rates, which is what we're looking for.
Right. Yeah, those are, those last questions were really the baseline questions that we, that Polco puts out. We're trying to do that to all communities so that we have some comparison between communities. And, but you're right, your early responses were very high percentage-wise, and now they've started to drop off. And I think pushing it out and getting people to understand why they need to answer these questions and the data that you can gather and start to make your decisions based upon that. I think you've gotten some nice data. And I know you're, you've used it for a park and rec poll on which one to do. We actually had an incident where another community had that, and all of a sudden, this one company went from third place to first place because they were all outside of the community. And it's not what the residents wanted, it was what this company was trying to do. So, it's a nice failsafe within our, our process.
Anything else?
How many other communities in Dane County are you?
Oh, we have most of Dane County. Being that we started here, we're based out of Middleton. We have Oregon, McFarland, Middleton, Madison, Dane County, Sun Prairie, Wanakee. I can't remember who else is out there. Cottage Grove.
Do you know how other communities use their results that they get from Polco? Or do you just gather them?
Actually, some of them use it for different reasons. I know Sun Prairie, they ask a question about curbside recycling, and I believe they put that into their budget process because the question was, would you pay two more, two more dollars a month for every week recycling as opposed to biweekly? So, they were able to use that data to go into the budget process. Oshkosh, which was a prime example, they had the golf course up there, they sold part of that land to Oshkosh Corporation, and then they had the balance of the property, do we make that into a park or do we keep that as a golf course? And so, the question came, or the responses came back about 78%, somewhere in that neighborhood. We want to keep it as a park. We want to make it into a park. So, then they followed up with a second question to those users, what do you want in the park? Listen, here's 10 different things we can put in there, give us your priority. Then the third question will come out will be, here's our different park designs, which one do you like the best? So, that's one way. Zine, Ohio, which is a community in Ohio, they put out a question about a roundabout, and it came back overwhelmingly, no, we don't want this roundabout. So, they basically put that issue on hold. So, it was a nice way to reach out without making a decision. You know, that's, that's a decision that you can't just, you know, repaint or do something. You know, once you do that, you've spent, you know, pro- You know, once you do that, you've spent, you know, probably a million, two million dollars in not having the citizen input, you really put yourself in behind a bad spot.
Does Polco advertise, like separately from the communities pushing out? Does Polco itself advertise or get out?
Yes, we do boost. We push out, and we're also going to start doing some more marketing. We're still only a three-year-old company, and there's only ten of us. And so, we got a lot of balls up in the air sometimes, so, you know, part of what we're trying to get out is, and what we came up with was the different ways to be able to push out through the, through the community.
And do you do anything with, with the results? Like, do you want it, or the results that our community gets, besides the baseline questions that you have?
Not really. We don't really go out and, we use some of them for illustrative purposes, but then I have to change and make sure I don't put my city administrator hat back on and be able to talk to, because I know most of the administrators who are doing this, and be able to talk to them and say, hey, you know, here's, here's the question. Oshkosh did a separate question about their snow plowing, and they were able then to look at the responses unfavorable, and then they kind of laid that over top of their street grid and were able to say, okay, these are the more narrow streets, these are more residential, and then actually, who's driving? You know, because that's, that makes a big difference in where they at, and they can make management decisions off of that. So, they were able to use it for a variety of different things, other than just their attitude survey.
I think a nice goal, if we ever get to a usership that the board is comfortable with doing what I'm going to propose, is to do a community survey and try to, like, service satisfaction, that we could then see year to year on, you know, if the service is improving, not improving, you know, just some performance metrics.
We actually have a community survey that we can let you have and save you some time.
Any other questions?
We can be allowed to promote this while elections are going on or to inform people of it, or is that not kosher?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, it's a village resource. It's just a service that the authorities.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
We can kind of, because that's where we get the influx of people here. We could at least give them a foot on it or something.
You're talking election day?
Yeah.
Oh, like, does it come through the polls and?
That's where we get concerned citizens coming here, but I don't know if that's allowed.
We have flyers on our conference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We get triples of people then, right? Yeah.
Okay.
One of the things we could do is maybe on that, the days that are, we have community events, have like a table or something set up, just talk about residents as they come through.
Yeah, one community actually printed out some small flyers with the QR, or QR code, if that's the right word, I'm not a techie person, so that they could actually go home and basically hit that and just load it up and be able to do it. They passed them out at basically a community event. And we can set that up and send it over to you, Matt, and you can, you know, there're just four on a page, and we just cut them up and handed them out. We did one up in Sauk County where we had a local government institute meeting, and the idea was, we had about seventy people at that meeting, we gave them each ten and told them their job for the next meeting was to actually go out and get ten more people. So, we kind of went with this, you know, process like that. So, there's, what, twelve of you here? You can all go out and your job is to get ten more people, and now you've added another hundred and twenty people to your two hundred and forty. And then challenge the next group to do the same thing, so.
Matt, does this get paid for out of the cable funds still, or is it on the?
The cable fund is discontinued, but, so it'll be under public relations in the budget.
Anything else? Thank you. We're down to seven, new business, and seven A is discuss and consider new operators license for July twenty eighteen to June twenty nineteen for Sabrina Schuman. There's a memo in your packet from the PD, and it looks like there's no issue with this person, Chief.
Correct.
There are motions. Motion in second to approve the operator's license for Sabrina Schuman for July twenty eighteen to June twenty nineteen. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes. Seven B, discuss and consider resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two, resolution authorizing the village treasurer to write off one thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars and four cents in delinquent personal property tax. Memo is attached in your packet showing you which businesses these are, and I think Lisa, Deb could probably answer any questions based on that. Any questions for Deb, or just, these are the same people that seems to be?
They're, it's, yeah, it's usually pretty much the same group. This is the third year that I've kind of gotten on the schedule, so these are write-offs from two thousand fifteen.
Okay.
I keep the balances from the prior two years in hopes that we may recapture them somehow.
These are relatively small amounts. Is this just like an old range or something, or, I mean, like, it seems like they would really owe a total of a lot more in personal property tax, and maybe this is like, is this a total tax bill?
It's just for like the office.
For personal property, not the estate.
Gotcha. Okay. So, it's not rent or stuff like this, property in the building? Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Deb?
I guess I have a question, Deb. Somebody's vote came in for some sort of a permit or whatever. We would certainly deny that until this is paid, then, correct?
Absolutely, and we do that for some businesses for liquor licenses or, that's really about the only thing. If they came in for a building permit, we could, but nobody has.
Unfortunately, these places don't have liquor licenses, I guess.
Yeah, I'm just saying, though.
If we get leverage, we'll use it.
Yeah? Absolutely.
Can we publish?
Yeah, no doubt.
I think they can be published, but they're probably in their little microprint.
No, I'm serious, on the agenda, like, tonight, we're going to have vacation.
Yeah, definitely, in a minute.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
This is in the, yeah, this is definitely in the packet.
Yeah, yeah, it's in the packet, but if someone just glances.
I see one of the places I frequent quite often.
They could look and see what businesses these are, pay your taxes.
Don't worry, tips.
Are the, are all these businesses still in business?
They're, the Toons for Toons is not, and I don't know about the Best Cleaners, yes.
That used to be like Piggly Wiggly, right?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if they're still in there or not.
Yeah. Were they, like, Piggly Wiggly, they would be tied to a D T, Oak Street there? Oh, in Hamburg's, yeah, thing, maybe?
Oh.
I'm not sure.
By the car wash, or?
Yeah, behind the car wash.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
Whatever, one of them out here owns a mobile restaurant, I mean.
Yeah.
It might be embarrassing to have that published, that they're not picked here, that they're.
I mean, as long as, assuming there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, right, it's a fact. It's not like we're making it up.
Lee, is that something that can be done?
Can be done. I mean, it's, you're, you're printing the truth.
Yeah.
So, it's not slander. I think that what would be interesting is if you sent a, after tonight's meeting, for example, if the clerk or someone was directed to, send a letter saying, you know, this will be published if, if it remains unpaid.
Right.
Because, you know, the, the whole, this whole idea of the personal property tax, businesses have pushed back really hard on this, and I'm surprised in some ways that it's still around, but it is, so that's something that they have to pay.
The other several hundred businesses around are all paying there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And, I mean, but, and let it probably say this is for twenty fifteen, and I'm assuming their current balance is for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Which I can also include in there.
Yeah.
Right. I'd hate to give you more stuff to do, but I, I think that that way, because I can, I can already tell you what you'll hear. Whoa, this was just published? I didn't know this was a problem. Well, you know, you've gotten fifty letters from us.
Yeah.
But I think that by telling them that this, this will appear on an agenda in the near future or something, that might be a good way to do it.
Okay. So, for next agenda for future agenda items?
Tell them that as of X number of dates, will this be released to?
Yeah.
This is perfect timing, because it could be starting January first.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that'd be great.
Okay.
So, should we have a motion to table this until next?
I think you could adopt the resolution with the direction that staff send out correspondence to, to any of the people around here.
Basically, a notification letter that you do this or we do this.
Right. It's just, because we write it off, does it mean we're not going to take the money? What do you?
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Does it just make your books easier? Is that why it needs to be written off?
Look.
Well, it's, I mean, we had built up quite a sizable balance when I first started doing this. I think the first year I wrote up eighteen thousand dollars, but that was from like a twenty-year time span, which is being built up, because there's no recourse to collect it. So, it was something that needed to be cleaned up.
Okay. And this is for twenty fifteen, what about twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen? Could we include those folks in the letter and also into the publishing of the?
So, don't get too far behind.
Right. But, I mean, we'd have to publish that this was for twenty fifteen, but we let the businesses know, look, we've got sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, it's people that haven't paid for two thousand sixteen years, the people that haven't paid for two thousand seventeen.
Yeah. I mean, if that's, if that's fine, I'll make a motion to have Deb or staff send these businesses a letter explaining what's going to happen if they don't pay.
Second.
Motion in second, any other discussion?
Is part of this to consider the resolution authorizing, or is it just direct to staff?
Um, we can authorize the write-off, but.
I'll just say, yeah, you're, you're authorizing the resolution, I'm sorry, Debbie, I didn't mean to do that. You're authorizing the resolution with further correction.
Yep. All right, so, second's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, motion in second to authorize a resolution with further direction. Do you have staff send these businesses a letter? Any other discussion?
So, then, would it be on the agenda again or get published anywhere?
Like, if I'm concerned, you can send them a letter.
Well, you send them a letter, but then you got to follow through.
Right. Yeah, give them, well, our next board meeting, so we need to hear from them before our next board meeting. Okay.
In two weeks?
I can open suggestions.
We could, we can make it so that we send the letters out, and as of January fifteenth, the names are released to the paper.
January fifteenth, December thirty-first. You know, a lot of these businesses, you say, oh, sorry, you know, we, we had money up till December thirty-first, but now we don't.
Yeah.
So, I, I think that the date is arbitrary, but, you know, you might want to try to get them out with that.
Okay. Fair enough. A motion second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes. Thanks, Deb. Okay, pure court, we took care of. And that big landfill.
So, we met last Monday, and we just basically looked at the bills that, and there were a couple of questions. One, why some of the bill came out to be a little bit higher, but we kind of covered that ground. It was because of.
The DNR inspection.
DNR inspection. That was the first time that that's happened in, I want to say fourteen years, if I'm not mistaken. So, every so often, they have to do an inspection, which increases our, our cost, our bill, so. But there is going to be part of a bill, there was a, a landowner hit, one of the, is it a well, or what did they hit? They hit a well?
The vent pipe?
The vent pipe, and then, so, there's a twenty-one hundred and seventy-dollar bill that's going to go to them, and then there's going to be a quarter hour taken off of the town's time and off of our time to cover some of the other stuff that came with it, so.
Jeff?
Yes?
How can you hit one of those?
I have no idea.
You'd almost have to be doing wheelies on the.
You're like five feet tall.
Well, they do have the pipes that are outside.
Yeah, they're outside the. Yeah, there's some up, like, we go across the road up in the.
Oh.
Yes.
But we just wanted to point out, the village won't be billed for that.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks. All right, joint fire department. All right, we met last Monday, that was November twenty-sixth. We had an update on the renewal of Pleasant Springs contract, cottage fire department. Pleasant Springs had provided probably six or seven changes. We discussed that and jointly approved that, got that over to Lee for a rewrite, and he was getting that over to Pleasant Springs.
They'll take action if they're at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. So, the parking lot, the repaving, the last portion that wasn't ever completed was the relining the back doors for the trucks. We don't expect the provider to come back because he was short that amount, and the town and the village said, you got to honor your estimate. So, the plan is to see if JJ and his crew might be able to do it in the spring timeframe once the weather permits. The fire protection services with the volunteer fire department was approved by both the town and the village. And then we tabled computer network infrastructure. They requested a shipping container for training purposes. The shipping container is actually, if you go down that little easement that we just worked with the town, they had some cars there this summer, had to practice the jaws of life. And so, they're going to check with Dale Houston, who's got the driveway there, to see if he's okay with it, and if they're going to use that as a kind of a temporary training center, which they can do on-site, that's a good idea. Might want to look at, like, blocking off some, some of the roadway zones on high shore. I mean, it's tough to see from the road, but still, I mean, we don't want a junkyard back there either. But the chief was going to get back with the size of the container and any additional information that we requested. Last meeting, the village board meeting, I updated that there is damage to door number four. We're going to quote to repair that for five hundred and fifty-six dollars. It's well underneath our deductible, so we'll just split that cost. And then, moving forward, we're going to install the electric eyes, apparently the ones they have in there now allow the doors to come down as trucks are moving. So, the electric eyes will actually cost twelve hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Okay.
And what we're going to use is twenty nineteen funds for that, so, Chris is getting this on that and solve that, and hopefully prevent any other damage to the doors moving forward.
So, does the five fifty-six come out of the, what the, the fire department's?
Comes out, the building has a fund.
Okay.
Yeah, same with the container, too, the container, they're going to be covering that.
Well, they're looking at donations.
The container's going to be, yeah, either donated or.
But the reason why they needed that was because they're running out of places to do, yeah.
Like control burns.
Yeah.
Like shipping container, you mean like overseas?
Yep.
Container, container, okay.
And it would have a lock on, so nobody could play in it.
And actually do come with windows, I think.
All right, anything else, John?
No.
Okay. All right. Law enforcement committee, we met on the week twenty-seven, I guess it was. You've had some reports, I think it was use of force and a couple other things that you talked about. I'll let him walk through that a little bit for us here.
Sure, the police department's going to be participating in a use of force database grant project, so we'll be able to, once this use of force project is completed, we and other departments will have a database that we can utilize to put in our use of forces, score them on a matrix to see if everything was okay, and then keeps track of them, and has an early warning system for us. And then, we're also partnered up with Carfax on, they will provide us information on vehicles, stolen vehicles, vehicle identification numbers, and partial plates. There's a lot of success stories in, for police agencies across country utilizing a partnership with Carfax, and it doesn't cost us a penny. And they will also handle our accident reports, and if someone wants a copy of one, they can just go through Carfax and get it through them, so that'll save a lot of staff time for us. For participating in the statewide drug takeback program, we got ten free doses of Narcan, which reduces drug overdoses, opiate drug overdoses. That's probably a four hundred dollar bonus to us. Accreditation has started again, so that's a yearly project. We only have an onsite every three years, though. I updated the committee on our speed and seatbelt and OWI grants, which totals about which totals about thirteen thousand dollars, which is overtime available to officers to go out and do traffic enforcement and looking for those three things in particular. And then I was informed that there are cameras on all the schools now outside. So if there's any vandalism or assaults or anything going on out there, we should now be able to retroactively get the film on it and see what it is, what happened. And we're also working on getting real-time access to the cameras in case there's an emergency incident. We can look at the cameras as it's going on.
Nice.
Any other questions?
Question.
Chief Labor, how many cans would you say of Narcan do you use a year, and is there a shelf life on those?
There is a shelf life, so it's good to get these. Well, there was one person that we've used six doses on so far. And so, yeah, we probably use a dozen a year. So it's a lot.
And I think the new ones, you said, are not what they call the mad device, not the thing you have to put together. It's already all together.
Right, it's just ready to go, because when you're fumbling in a life-death situation with putting two vials together and then a misting thing on top of that, it's a real pain in the butt. So these are real fast and effective.
Okay.
For the Carfax, for the accident reports, I know other communities use the DOT, like send their reports there. Do we not do that?
Oh, yeah, we have to.
Oh.
Yeah, all of our reports are sent via computer to the State Department of Transportation.
So they can get it through the...
They can get it through there if they want, sure. They have that opportunity. It'll take a lot longer.
Yeah, it does.
And it'll probably cost more, but they can get it through there, too.
Do you know how much it costs on Carfax?
We suggested five dollars, which is normally what we would charge for someone to do it. They don't, they're not trying to make money off of selling police reports to people. They make their money, I believe, on getting data and sharing it. And so I think that's where they make their money. They didn't, they said we can give those reports out to people for free if that's what you want. But we usually charge five dollars, so that's what they will charge for us. And we get that.
Oh, nice.
We get that money back, and they do the work.
Yeah, like a free tool. Get stuff done, so. Okay. Anything else for Chief Labor? All right, we're down to Parks, Rec and Forests. From the looks of this, maybe Sean and JJ might want to...
Sean. Young man, could you help me?
I can't bend over.
He forgot his name.
I'll push him.
Yeah, he's... I wouldn't have came over, Sean, it really wouldn't.
All right, this item is discuss and consider accepting the current splash pad design for Bakken Park. I'll let Sean talk us through that.
So over the last several months, we've put together services. We've been working with friends of Bakken Park's flatbed committee, twelve people. And this was the design that we came up with that everyone liked the best. We've had several different renderings, and this is the one that the committee picked. I'm just asking that, moving forward, if and when we build this splash pad, we're not committing to actually building it, but that the village choose to pick this design when we move forward.
I mean, is there a certain age group that's designed for, like up to...
It's, you have different zones. So this zone right here is a toddler zone. This zone right here is a teen zone, and then in the middle is a family zone.
Any questions for Sean on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Are things changing enough in this area to more than... Because we're already talking, at least the computers down the road, at least, I mean, funding and everything, that we wouldn't have to revisit this? In other words, if there's some new fangled, I don't think there is, but water and spouts and everything else. I'm just curious to...
They'll...
In discussions with the vendor...
This section right here, this toddler area, there's a piece of equipment right here that's brand new. Things change yearly, but we could choose to substitute or... For the most part, a lot of this stuff is tried and true there. So, yeah, there could be something new that popped in that we would maybe choose to, you know, one feature that we could maybe choose to change out. But overall, it would be the same.
Okay, I'll second Melissa's motion. Is there any other discussion?
And the bucket was like a main thing that they were looking at, right?
Yeah, they were looking for kind of the wow factor to this splash pad and not being just something generic. And that's what the group possibly, that's what the group picked. And with, and we'll be revisiting this down the road, but with the opportunity of possibly maybe having some sponsorship on that bucket. So maybe it says, I don't know.
A company name on it.
A company name on that, yeah, that we could actually sponsor that.
How big is that bucket? Just give us an idea.
It's about, I believe it's between twenty-five and thirty gallons. Yeah, so it's going to get you wet. Mess up your hair.
It's a consistent capacity, older people on that, or just...
It's just some general principle.
I'm sorry, Jack.
Does it pass any people? Is there like a recommended capacity?
Twenty-five hundred square feet, that one could handle probably anywhere from fifty to a hundred kids. I don't know the exact number. I can get that for you.
I was just curious, that seems big enough.
And just, so everybody understands, it works in zones. So there's an activator button, which would be right here in the center. And each zone, the whole thing works off of four minutes, so it's not all running at one time. So like the toddler zone goes for a little bit, and then the teen zone goes for a little bit, and then the family zone goes for a little bit. And they gotta hit it again. So it only runs for about four minutes.
Where's the adult zone? Put a bar in behind there?
Moving about.
They can all operate together, right?
Absolutely, yeah. But they don't operate at the same time. Not all of the units are on at the same time. It's just different zones. And so that encourages kids to move around if they can. I mean, we're obviously not going to want the toddlers in underneath the bucket necessarily, but it works in zones to try and conserve water.
So just so I understand, right now we're just looking at the design to approve that. When we do anticipate this coming back for approval to actually do it? Because I personally am not convinced that Bakken Park is the place because of parking and some of the safety concerns or necessarily the need for it. But I just want to make sure that it's clarity here, that we're just looking at design at this moment.
Absolutely, it is. And we have to come back probably January, February, and the board would have to approve the engineering money for this project as well as the shelter. So, yeah, you're just, again, you're just approving the design itself, nothing else.
And my concern is, I mean, if you have the three zones and only one can work at a time, so you have like the fifty or ideally up to a hundred, you have, say, thirty in each zone. What are the other sixty kids doing, waiting for their four minutes?
It's not four minutes per zone. It's four minutes each time all of the splash pad is activated. So it may be a minute and a half here, a minute and a half here, and whatever there. And so they can, and it will work, it will work, let me correct myself. It's not just going to be this zone, then this zone, then this zone. There'll be pieces of this zone, pieces of this zone, and pieces of that zone. I'm sorry.
That sounds better.
Yeah. But it does encourage them to move around and keep active and...
And you don't have one area getting all waterlogged while the rest isn't. Because you have to shake off.
Yeah, dry off and then get wet. Okay. All right, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the design of the splash pad for Bakken Park. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. All right, and guessing, is that Parks and Rec with the tree branch height, or is that... Okay.
Yep, so we, our current ordinance allows for trees to hang a minimum of ten feet over the roadway. And, I'm sorry, a ma, yeah, maximum, excuse me, maximum of ten feet over the roadway. We've had a couple complaints from folks that live on Taylor Street that are, they're driving trailer campers and things through there that some of those private trees are hitting their campers. So I did some research and checked with some other, and this should be in your packet as well, to check with some other communities. And fourteen feet seems to be the standard number that everybody uses. So I'm just asking that we change our ordinance from ten feet over the roadway to fourteen feet, but we keep it at ten feet over the side. That's also pretty standard in what other communities are doing.
You're talking the branch height as it goes horizontal or just as what it hangs down to?
Okay. And also, you know, with our, when we're plowing, when JJ's going to plowing and our street sweeping and things like that that are hitting, those branches are hitting the trucks. So it'll just allow us to enforce that stuff. If there are trees, obviously, we take care of them, but if they're private trees, then we ask that the whole ordinance does that.
Any other question?
I make a motion and we change it before it can be...
Okay.
Can your motion include direction to draft the necessary... Yeah.
For the ordinance?
Yes.
Second's okay with that? Okay, motion and second to change the height of the minimum tree hanging over the roadway to fourteen feet with direction to draft the ordinance to reflect that. Any other discussion?
I just have a question.
Yep.
If it's like in the right of way, is it village responsibility?
You mean the, between the sidewalk and the curb?
That would be on the village's...
So that's both road and the ten foot for the sidewalk, is what?
Correct.
All right, correct.
Okay.
Well, it's not, you don't have to cut the trees for hanging over the sidewalk for fourteen feet.
Ten feet.
Ten feet for the sidewalk.
Yes, right. Fourteen over the road. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. Discuss and consider grade change behind North Lawn Softball Field, number one.
If anybody's been to the softball field at North Lawn Park, this area right here, the only seating for, Manona Grove JV and Varsity play here as well as we program these fields as well. The only real seating for spectators is the area right along here, along both of the baselines. This really slopes off quite a bit, so you're actually, if you can set up a chair, you're sitting kind of below the field. I had a resident approach me about possibly changing the grade in there. And I reached out to Humber Construction and also NSA elected to donate some... Surveying, surveying time and that whole project. So Humber is going to donate the dirt and as well as the equipment time to level that off. What it'll do is it'll set us up so in the future, we could possibly purchase bleachers and put them in this area. But in the meantime, it's just a flat spot for people to be able to sit.
Is it a water drainage issue also, or is it...
It is not.
Okay.
No, no, that was part of the survey, part of the project, and it does not change anything with the drainage. So I just wanted...
Actually, can I help? Because it does hit one in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking it might prove the runoff and...
Who owns the bleachers out there right now, also at the school?
We do.
Yeah, I can attest, I mean, sitting in those bleachers, you have the doggos, you can't see anything if you sit in the bleachers. And if you sit there, you're sitting on a slope or a wall to Humber.
Okay.
Make a motion to...
Okay.
Change the grade behind the North Lawn Softball Field, number one.
Your second. Motion and second to approve the grade change behind North Lawn Softball Field, number one. Any other discussion?
If you just can send a thank out, thank you to NSA.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Humber, yeah.
And it works out well, Mike's got a young sophomore player. That's interesting.
All right.
But he didn't do just his seat, though.
Right, no, it's not just for him.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you. JJ, I guess just a question for you. When we're talking about trees hanging over, when you see trees blocking stop signs, what's your policy? Do you just, you can trim them right away, or you just...
Yeah, that's, we get those ports periodically, you have to see one, absolutely, just call them.
That's why I was confused if this was for you or for Sean, when with this item.
Forests, my forests.
Okay.
But anything that's safety or a safety issue has our tree, we could take care of.
Yeah, I was just thinking if somebody notices one, if you just take a picture of it and send it to JJ, tell him what street it is. Because I see, like when I drive an ambulance, we're up higher, and sometimes you write your stop signs, like, oh, there's a stop sign there. You know, it's hard to see, stop signs are like ten feet in here sometimes. If you did it, all right. Moving down to reports from village officers, Troy?
I have no report.
Okay, James, no report. Jeff?
No report.
Melissa?
Christmas in the Grove was this past weekend, and I went to the parade, and it was cold. But the cookies and cocoa and the fun, they had it in the fire department bay, which was nice. Because usually it's out in the cold. So that was nice, and you got to have close-ups of the fire trucks. And then I, we did breakfast with Santa, which I think went over really well at the Drumland residences. There were a lot of, a lot of families there and Santa, so. I put in my wish list. And the craft fair at Lacial Drumland, there were a lot of vendors, too. So it was all really well done. Good job, Chamber.
Yeah. All right, John Nelson?
Yep, two items. Thanks for the presentation on Polco. I think Matt offered, whether it's monthly or bi-monthly, kind of reports on responses and questions. And I thought we had some pretty good points on how we could tie this into like budget and future decisions. And I hope that the village board, I would encourage us to take Matt up on the offer and maybe continue the discussions on using Polco since we're paying for it. And then really for the four of us, the next joint fire committee meeting, which I forgot to mention, is actually January twenty-eighth. There's not a need to have one next week.
Okay.
Oh, there isn't.
Okay.
John Williams?
I guess the only thing, Christmas Grove was very nice. I sat inside eighteen fifty-five with a lot of other people.
Smart.
And it was warm. But it was, it was fun to see the kids and everything. I think we had a good time.
Okay. All right, the only thing I have, just to add to the law enforcement committee thing, we probably won't be meeting in December since that's Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. It was hard to get a quorum to commit for Christmas days. If we do have a meeting, it'll probably be the week before, I mean, eighteenth, but we probably won't have one. Unless the chief has something that he feels we need to work on. All right, legal briefings.
Well, my legal briefs will be brief. The summit vacation, the dates were changed. So we'll be publishing and then actually having the final hearing and the first meeting in January, which is January seventh, I think.
So it's a class three, it's a class three notice.
Class three notice, and...
Class three means that should be three weeks in the paper?
Three weeks in the paper and a week before the actual hearing.
Yep.
And we came up, just short, so Lisa and I, in conjunction with the attorney for summit, I mean, you might have been able to kind of wedge it in, but he said we'd rather have you do it this way. So not a problem. There's been...
Doesn't impact what they're giving you?
No, and I, that was a major concern of mine. He said they just want to eventually donate. So, okay. We have the contract with Colonial Club to finish, we finalized the one for Briar Patch. In terms of development, the... Corey Ridge still... Is still pending. They have not come through with a performance bond or a letter of credit. And they write letters and I, and we write back and say, you know, just give us something so that we can react to it. And this has been going on for six or seven months. The former Gidorzi Building, now Silver Badger LLC, that's all done. The Unzarella property is, was, that closing has been completed.
That's Oakstone.
Oakstone.
Yep.
And, we have anything else that... So we're on top of all of the development-related matters. Shady Grove, request for zoning is next Wednesday, the...
Plan Commission on twelfth.
Yep. So that's what's going on.
Okay.
Sent this in an email to you all, but we can make it so that there is a couple new businesses. We don't have actual names for the businesses yet because we don't have timeframes on when they'll, when they'll do their build-outs. Both would go in existing buildings. One is a distillery business that would make spirits as well as bitters. And they're hoping to be open within five to seven months. And that would be on Bonnie Road and Progress, the corner there. And then a Mexican restaurant, I know the chief labor's been...
Taco Bell?
I don't know the name of it.
They said restaurant.
But we've been told a Mexican restaurant has signed on to be in the Great Wolf Building. So, again, don't have a name or an opening date, but pretty exciting. That's the... so, again, don't have a name or an opening date, but pretty exciting, that's the, actually the fifth restaurant since Summit was announced to go to that location, there have been five, five restaurants in the Commerce Park, so...
So, it's good peripheral effect. All right. Okay, and Aaron's not here, he's at training, Chief Labor, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, yeah, alternate site, parking's still not an issue, obviously, I guess.
Yeah, we wouldn't write tickets unless there was snow.
Okay.
We don't wanna make people mad.
Right. Okay, and Deb, anything else? Anything?
You're official on the list.
I know.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let everybody know that I picked up the tax bills today, and you should probably expect them towards the end of the week in the mail. Overall, your 2018 taxes went down over 2017 by less than 1 percent, but still went down. The savior was the lottery and gaming credit actually went up $60 this year, so that helped out tremendously. Our mill rate ended up being 23.46, $23.46 per thousand, and our assessment ratio is at 89.4.
All right, Lisa, just got over to you, I know you have something in your crossing guard.
Yes, so we have a crossing guard, Margaret Larson, that I would like to recognize, she is retiring, or has retired at the end of the month. She was with the village for over 10 years as a crossing guard, and was a great asset, and we will miss her greatly, so, thank you, Margaret.
Which one is she?
She's at Glacial Drumland.
Oh, cute, yeah, she's good.
Yes.
She's fun.
Yes.
Kids love it.
We have a replacement now, right?
We do have a replacement, Melissa, who's been working a few days, so she's going to be taking it full-time, but we are in pursuit for substitute crossing guards, so if anybody's out there that you know of, took some of my way, because we could use a couple extra, just to have backups.
Sure. All right, thank you. All right, JJ, anything else?
Little bit of snow, nothing major so far.
All right, John, anything?
Yeah, just quickly, as John mentioned, thank you to MSA and Homburg for the North Lawn project. Also, on November 16th, we did run a special event, a turkey shoot, you know, we don't actually shoot turkeys, but it's a parent-child event where they shoot free throws, it's eight different, eight different divisions, and whichever parent-child makes the most free throws in that division gets a turkey, and Pigley Weekly donated half of the turkeys for that, so I want to thank Pigley Weekly for donating turkeys.
Absolutely. Okay. That brings us down to communications and miscellaneous business, just consider approval of vouchers, any comments, questions on vouchers?
Do we have a contract with AlSCO, AlSCO, for the mats?
Yes, we do. Well, I know we don't have a contract, but it's one of those 30-day notice type things.
Okay. Anything else?
We got a motion to approve the vouchers.
All right, your second. Motion and second to approve vouchers as presented, any other discussion? Matt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Correspondence, I have not gotten anything official that I'm aware of, upcoming community events, anybody, other than Christmas in the Grove, obviously, and that's...
Was there, was that one, a letter from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities?
Oh, yeah, it was from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, yeah.
That was...
All right, future agenda items, anybody? I think, I don't think so.
We should go provide an update on the conservancy quarter.
Yeah.
White Line Project.
I'll let the grounds grow.
The deadline for completion is when?
December 14th. We'll see.
Okay.
They filter temporary haul load, and they, I believe it's Frozen Hard will be out there tomorrow, so...
Okay.
...material out, but they got the big cut on, and got some, some more finish work.
Okay.
They know that they have, related damage was taken with gas.
Okay.
Any feedback from the residents there? Have you, have any feedback to the residents there?
I don't know that, but I don't know if you want to give a vote. Okay. Jack, the ordinance of the 12-foot or 14-foot...
14-foot tree over there. Yep, okay, put that on. Um, anything else?
Look, Jack, people are reporting seeing a wolf in the village, it's not, it's a coyote. There are pictures of it.
Yeah.
Okay, it's on the north side, yeah.
I don't know, it's really...
It's a big one, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a cool thing.
No.
Well, there's one, there's usually more.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that brings us down to closed session. At this time, I'll make a motion that the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board enters into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985, parent one, parent E deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, negotiate terms involving recreational facilities between Village of Cottage Grove and Wisconsin Yacht Club, and the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board will also enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985, parent one,